Okay, good evening. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. It is now seven o'clock. Can I please give the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Okay, the only correspondence is the resignation letter from Dan Nosten from the Bethel Board of Education. We want approval of minutes. I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting from June 18th, 2024. Grab a second, second. Looks like we were all here. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, see aye, aye, and you close, post carries. Reports, okay. I was gonna, I keep putting off the presentation of the World Cafe we did in March just because we had so many things going on. We'll do it at the next meeting. It's not a terribly long presentation, but I do need to get it done and out with you guys. We've been talking about the Congregate Housing over in I actually got there. So the Congregate Housing is now going to be assigned to a, I guess we'll call it a separate group now that's under the Bethel Housing Authority. It's going to be the Bethel Congregate Corporation. This deal's been kind of going on for a while now, but it's actually to the point where it's, it's almost ready to finish up. The Augustine Homes, which was basically run by the Catholic Diocese in Bridgeport, kind of wants to get out of the Congregate Homes business. Place is in terrible shape and we're going to be looking for, I should say, the Housing Authority through this Bethel Congregate Corporation. We're looking for funds from the state. Sounds like they've got a pretty good deal and funds coming. Anything that you want to add to this, Melanie?
No, I think it's just a nice opportunity for the people that live there in Bethel to be able to stay there because if in the worst case, they could have to leave or something else would be going in there. So the Bethel mansion's been staying there and it sounds like it's going to be really renovated and be a nice place. So it looks nice in Bethel.
A question, Melanie, is that Bethel resident only or is that open to anyone in the community?
I also don't have the answer to that.
I believe it's anybody in the community. Several would really rather us rich than anything else.
Yeah, rather rich.
Yeah, because they have folks from all over the place. Yeah. And we're not going to be involved. I mean, as far as the assignment assumption, we're not really involved in that from the town perspective, right?
Right.
Technically.
It's a separate town entity, yes.
Okay. But.
Just so you know, we closed last week.
Good. Congratulations.
There are a lot of future TENS at speed.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was closed.
I think, I think Chris, it was so long, you know, it's always may set those things especially.
Wow, that's good. I will ask, so the Bethel, the Bethel Congregate Corporation is under Housing Authority? Is it entirely separate?
I don't actually know.
Okay.
What I would say is I know it's a non-stock corporation.
Right.
And so there's no ownership of it, but they have bylaws that presumably allow the Housing Authority to appoint the directors of the administration.
Okay. Yeah. Are the bylaws available publicly? Do they have to file with the town clerks?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know whether this is the Housing Authority, whether that I noticed we have a provision in the charter for the Bethel Housing Authority, but this separate entity, which I believe is a whole of those of severance, I believe that's a good thing, that Housing Authority. But we can look into a little bit more.
Well, just also, you know, our, our planning is only official is the president. I just also want to make sure there's no issue between that and this, like conflict of interest or chartering like that. Because I didn't know until I saw this that she was going to be president. She's currently the Chair of the P and Z. No, not P and Z, but Housing Authority. There is a, there is a provision in state law that says she can't be appointed the Chair in the beginning. I don't know about subsequent, so we do want to look at that just to make sure that's not threats for us to do down the line. Okay. We've wanted to, we've wanted to work on ordinances. Things have been very, very busy with our attorney, getting around contracts and things like that. I'm not going to necessarily propose it tonight, but, or we could if we wanted to. I'd like to bring in an outside firm, you know, probably like Marino or somebody like that to look at our ordinances and help us get some of them on track. You know, right away, one of the big ones is anytime we do a light or a fine or like that, we really have no ordinance in existence that actually allows us to do anything. We have no ordinance that has any kind of teeth. It's been an issue for years and nobody's touched it. We have a dumpster ordinance, but we don't give dumpsters. We don't do dumpsters anymore. We've talked about a number of those. I know we've talked about the solid waste. We don't have to tackle that because there's controversy on the board. But I do want somebody to look at the other ones and research them. What are your, what are your guys' thoughts? Because it's going to be about the same amount of money long-term to do it, you know, having legal representation. It's just that Melanie really has her hands full with DCD contract, which I'm hopefully is almost done. I should just get a letter of agreement and a number of different things. What do you guys think?
Can you put it all on RFP or, you know, request for some proposals and get some ideas what costs would be?
Yep, sure.
It also might make sense to go through your answer.
Yeah, I think we should do those first. We, we kind of are at a, we're at a kind of a pace where, a place where we don't have that many really. But listen, even our water ordinance, right? Our water ordinance clearly says you are not allowed to wash your car or water your lawn with municipal water. It's a misdemeanor and the police are supposed to be enforcing it. That was done in 1969. I, I just think we don't have that many, but it's probably time just to go through. I think I'll get an RFP like you said. I'll put something out, define the scope, how many we have. Then I'll come back to the board at the next meeting. How's that?
In particular with the enforcement ordinance you're talking about, that's main use, health and building. And the hope is that if people get levers and fines, maybe things can go to the next level because then get their attention and engage them, hopefully head things off. But when there's no incentive to stop behavior, then sometimes it escalates to a point where it becomes much more expensive for the town to deal with it. So that's also the hope that some of this can be resolved at that level.
We have no clear policy at certain point. We, we should establish a policy, establish a hearing officer, the whole thing. So we're doing it right. So I'll come back with an RFP. I just kind of want to make sure we talk about that after. We've never taken a look at the ordinance. It's, it's pretty comical how it will be. As you know, we, well, this is, this is from a, this is really PUC, but it's also Board of Selectmen. Kind of wanted to go through what's been going on the well as it affects the town. Bob Villa had gotten a, oh, first off, the Maple well has been drawing down and it needs to be cleaned. Bob Villa had gotten Church, I don't know them, Company Church, HB Church. They were able to come in, were able to come in early, beginning last week to work on the well. In the process of getting ready, we discovered that our Eureka plant and the Chestnut, we're not, we were not able to get them online. They've been closed for a while. Nobody has been inspecting them and making sure they were ready to go, which will resolve. I already mentioned that to, to the Water Director. Anyway, with Eureka, we believe it was a pressure valve and, you know, it's one of those old systems, 1970s were there and all that. But Chestnut, once they got it online, they had a water main break and they had to fix that. Now they've been watering, getting water through filters and all that. Meanwhile. Now, the backup plan when that happened was to seek a diversion permit from the state to allow us to get water from Danbury that week while we were working on the well. Unfortunately, Danbury also has their own challenges. First off, they've been kind of losing capacity on their west side because people have been irrigating the lawns. And they were, they were not sure they could do it. So it was kind of kept touch and go that weekend, then it had a major warehouse fire. And they were, even though despite the rain coming, we were looking at that and probably wasn't going to work in our favor. So finally, we just kicked back Church and they're right now do intend to come the 15th of July. Right now, our tanks are good. Hopefully, we're going to have Eureka ready to go. Sounds like Chestnut will be ready to go as a backup. We may not even need water from Danbury. Is also, they figured out they can attach a generator to well one, like one A is the one we're using. And that will allow us to start one, you know, and make sure it's working before we stop one A. So that's kind of the plan going on. The, the big issue that's come from this though, and I was, I put it on as agenda item, we'll probably just table it, is that if we were going to do this, that we needed a water policy with Danbury over that time to say no irrigation. And it really kind of came to a head that we should be thinking about, you know, an irrigation policy down the line. I think that'll be driven by PUC technically. But, but it's still, from the town's perspective, we really should be looking at some sort of policy. It sounds like we could do something where it's two days a week, alternating, you know, even in address, addresses or something like that. But I'll, I'll share more with you because I got an email from Tom Villa about it. But when we get to the PUC meeting, I'm sure that's a point where he'll want to talk about it more. I just want to put it on everybody's radar because there was a lot of talk about it. We were asking folks not to water that week and that was why. I don't know if you guys got any feedbacks from anybody, but right now we're in really good shape. Tanks are full.
I saw my ton of water and I said, I paid the bills, let the grass lie, I don't care.
There's some sort of study from Dallas or something. Yeah, there's some sort of study in Dallas that says you literally can just water two days a week, spread out and your grass is going to be fine. And they've got hotter days than we do. But anyway, the only, the only real concern that we had at the time, we did ask the condo associations, especially the summit, to stop watering, like once this all kind of happened and we were preparing. The summit was the only one that gave us any feedback. They weren't, they weren't crazy about the idea. Part of it, I guess, is they have sod lawn from when they had it built, so it takes a lot of water. Anyway, right now we're having this.
When was the last time Chestnut was checked?
Couple of years? Yeah. So I've, I've talked to Tom about it that we're going to, we're going to do a regular inspection schedule on both of those. I don't know why they aren't. Yeah.
People have to drink water.
Yeah, and God forbid, one of our wells went down and I guess he's, yeah, he's recognized that well one has been drawing down for some period of time. And we're lifting along until we get perks through.
I guess we'll do with that under.
Yeah, but from a, from us as a Board of Selectmen, for you, it's, it is important to the town to have water.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And hopefully water doesn't take much. So I just wanted to kind of just make a note on vacancies. I put it out to the Republican Town Committee. We do have a number of vacancies on Board of Convention still. Ethics Fire, P and Z Alternate Sustainable Bethel, Public Site Building One, Board of Education One. The vacancy on Parks and Recreation was filled by Parks and Recreation. There's a Republican seat and there was a woman in town who we thought was great, and so they appointed her. But other than that, we had, so a number of vacancies not afforded that I want to get to the Town Committee. And last.
Did we not fill that vacancy within the timeline?
Exactly.
That they filled it?
Yeah, it was, it was like 70 days or something. It's been a while. The rest of the, the rest of them actually have been a while also, but I don't think there's anybody who's entered Bethels. I mean, Parks and Recreation is, is huge to this committee right now.
Board of, that just happened, right?
Board of, that just happened. So that's, we got time. Just, just, and by the way, 60 days from tonight because we are officially notified, I think, when we talk about here. You know? And that is it because I'm not going to, I'm going to pass on the World Cafe presentation. So next up, Eric. I've asked Eric to give a overview of some of the sidewalk projects going on.
Yeah. And also, Melanie, I'm going to ask Eric a couple of things about the process and the timeline. So we have three sidewalk projects in different stages. First one is the project, which is starting to charge.
Not the eighth now?
Not the eighth now, it's the fifteenth. And then we have two that are in various stages we will design, which lots of one, lots of two, with lots of being grant. So all three of these are, are fully funded by grants. But the thing to point out is that the grants only cover the construction and the town is responsible for all that upfront stuff. So really the design and bid process is not covered by the grants. So just to really quick to kind of run down. We start out with conceptual design, usually contain, obtain a commitment fund for the grant. Then we do preliminary design. Most of that we can do in-house, especially with sidewalks. Any kind of specialized engineering or something like, you know, like maybe design a retaining wall or something with the required engineer for that. Then they're basically going through there to pre-final design. In that process, however, there is a lot of legal stuff, especially with these sidewalks. We get these permanent easements. So first off, we have to identify the work, where the permanent easements are. So we have, depending on the situation, basically, you know, the right of way, you know, you hear different things people say, different things like, oh, the right of way extends eight feet from the curb or whatever. You guys know that's not always the case. So depending on where the right of way line is, we may have to, if we can't stay within it, we might have to take a little bit of the, the front part of people's property. The way we've been doing that is through a permanent easement. Melanie, I had this conversation. We're not buying the property. We're just buying a permanent piece of that. She can explain this generally easier to obtain. Anyway, those are usually just tiny slivers of land where we can kind of cut over the, the front part of it. So that, that requires boundary survey, it's a appraisal process. We've got to put that in a permanent record, land records and so forth. So anyway, those are just cost components that are kind of unique to these sidewalk projects. And really, we, we try to avoid them obviously as much as possible, but you know, doing the sidewalks and connecting everything, it's almost like a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. It's those, those, you know, those obalnax. Really are the same. So we're trying to focus on those. Anyway, going through that process, we get approval on the final design. Once we get that, ConDOT administers all the plans, by the way, so two people at ConDOT that are approving it. And then we go out to bid and so on, contract. So those are basically hopefully as kind of summarize that we include the steps that we go through. You know, if I forgot.
Where are the other two projects?
So like I said, the first one is about to start construction. Lots of one were our final design deadlines in September. So we can submit that to Westco, Westco agrees it. So Westco, without getting into the details, Westco basically does the funding part and ConDOT administers the grant.
Yeah, no, I was just curious where it's located.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, location. So Lots of one is kind of all over the place. There's some on Greenwood Avenue, Brass and Plain Street, Main Street here, Maple Avenue, Greenwood Avenue in Milwaukee. I had to talk to Dan about maybe showing a map, but it's kind of all over the place. I can give you guys a map if you want. You know, just letting you know.
And then the other one?
Then Lots of two is really kind of more centered, kind of west downtown. It's Whitney, Elgin, Diamond, Barnum Hill, High Street and Grant Street. So that's a little bit more, Lots of one is all over the place, but Lots of two is a little bit. So, and as we go through some of the pieces, it's not like we're doing both sides of the street everywhere on sections. Sometimes it's one side of the street or we may have to do a little force trading to kind of lead the cost estimates and so forth.
What are the amounts of the grants, ballpark?
So Rooster Duran was around 300, 350, I should say. Lots of one is 1.9 million and lots, I'm sorry, lots of one is 1.5 million, lots of two is 1.9 million.
So pretty significant size program too.
So, I mean, the, the cost estimates, we're regarding to use ConDOT. The prices, it tends to be high, so at least so far, but that's, that's probably a good thing. Worse if the, the base came in higher.
It might be worth mentioning, the, the one that you're working on now comes from the Community Connectivity Grant? Do we know how much is going to be left over that you can use on others?
So it was about 350 and it came in about 140. So we're trying to take this kind of just cautiously to see if there's any, any chimney orders. If not, then we just remove it for spot sidewalk improvements wherever we can. I talked to the grant administrator. He's okay with us using it for sidewalks, but not really much else. Get to the point where we have wanting to spend, we could maybe talk about other, but it'd probably have to be transportation, pedestrian related, bus shelter related stuff, something like that.
Right. Anything else? Terrific. Thank you. I do, I do want to add one thing that I, I forgot to mention. I, we had HRRA this week. And really, the only, the only interesting outcome was they're looking at another program for food scraps, kind of an extension of what they have now. The feeling is that in the legislature, they're going to push a mandate through by 2028 that, you know, everybody has to divert food scraps from the waste stream. So what they're looking at is having what HRRA purchase, we'll call them like waste drop boxes. And we could put one in Stonehill and one out somewhere else. And basically people would drop their food scraps there and take them all in the transfer station. It's just, it's optional. It's not, you know, HRRA is doing it through their funding. It may be something we want to take advantage of, but yeah, it's coming our way anyway. And right now the folks seem to like it, they have the transfer station. And we also down the transfer station have new scale. The scale will finally allow us to actually do measuring things like, not having just one cost for everything. So we have separate costs, a cost for food scraps, a cost for municipal solid waste and a cost for furniture and things like that. So we're actually discussing, looking at a pricing plan for the furniture. We'll come back with that maybe can up. Yes, since we get a lot of furniture instead of just doing it for, we might make it, I don't know, 45, 50 cents or some of that, but we'll come back to you. We did get a new scale. It was kind of dramatic, I guess, getting it the old and fixed, but. But that's it. All the report is, wanted you guys to know. So next up, whole business. So this was tabled from before and I'll, I'll just, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion. Make sure, we're doing this kind of C and R before. I move that we recommend to the Board of Finance the amount of $23,000 for the Town Hall Energy Management Controls Replacement. Grab a second. Any discussion?
I'll start through discussion.
Okay, so while we've got Eric here. So I've met Georgian had questions last week. And if you look at C1, two and three in the packet, hopefully these are some of their answers.
Look, I think, you know, this is basically the scope of the work. I think my big question, what is, what is the cost savings? And is there software licensing that's going to continue into the future is, you know, we're talking about doing this for energy savings. You're going to spend $22,000 to install these controls.
Yeah.
What's the cost savings to the town by installing these controls? I think that's my biggest question.
Well, that was, I was answering the covered email, C1. The annual cost savings at the municipal center was estimated at $13,917 annually. Is that not the C1? Okay.
And is there any continuing licensing fees or what are the fees year after year associated with installing this system?
I don't think there's any fees specific to this. We have controls anyway, so.
So our controls can recognize this and it's part of like your automated billing system platform?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're thinking that this is year after year? 13, 14,000?
Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, see aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Eric, can you make sure we pass this information to the Board of Finance as well?
Yes, everyone.
Thanks. Excellent. Okay, consideration of easement for 42 Palm Tree Road.
So this is the electric distribution. Actually, it contains a solar monitor, which we can go with our fire mains. So this has been rather complicated insofar as our process here. The Board of Selectmen referred for an A dash 24 report, the electric distribution easement, as well as referral to public works. Because we want to be sure that putting that easement over that part of, we will see, country's intersection there was a point to see if it impacted anything else that might be there, if there are any other easements or anything else planned to be above grade. Just if you go look at that. So we asked Eric to look at the map and see if he made any comments of insurance. So he's here for that.
Yeah, I brought this. Well, stop me. I moved if I told her to highlight it, just understand what was happening. Bottom line, we don't have any real, you know, major concerns, just some kind of nitpicky questions, you know, this, this state property, nobody was really aware that that's there. We didn't see a deed for it in the, when we looked in the records. I don't know if that's an issue. I don't know. It's tangential. Should I maybe even ask us to look at that specifically? But that was just a question.
We're going to buy you a page here. I heard you mentioned this one.
Yeah. This is these two.
But we, we.
I don't want to derail.
We were looking for title work to be absolutely sure who, who owns this now because the town can convey it is a property they don't own. Make sure of the ownership.
Sure. One thing that, that could be done, I don't know, there, there's a poll here. If this, if either they moved this poll or they added a second poll, you could avoid the state property perhaps. Oh, this came up. I'm sure this, yeah, these questions.
So Peter Olson, I represent the property. First, if there is a deed and a map in Land Records in the top 15 state, 2015, it's part of the Bunkers Bridge reconstruction. There was an agreement between state and town. And in that agreement, state agreed to convey the property back to the town when the project was done. And nobody ever did. So, so we're stuck with the fact that state owns pieces of property. They've committed to reconvey to the town. It'll just take what it takes on state time, right? That's how that's going. Second is we did, we were originally planning on connecting to the poll that's shown on the survey. EverSource 2365, I think. Which is in the land owned by the state. And because we don't want to have to go get an easement from the state, what we've done is that poll is going to be moved out of this land owned by the state to a new location that's five feet further west and into the land owned by the town. And so based on that, there are two easement areas. Easement area Y1 is land owned by the town right now. And easement area Y2 is the portion owned by the state that will be reconveyed to the town and will be second spent on, what's the town. Which we don't need for electric service, but EverSource wants to be sure their trucks have easement to drive over the town's land to service the polls. So that's what, we'll close that later on. Right now, our biggest issue is we don't have power. All this stuff and we have no power. We got the way people fill those units. We're about a month out from needing to close and EverSource is needing EverSource. Hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, no, I mean, the only other question was, this shape seems a bit usually complex and large, but there was a reason for that as well.
Yeah, so so it covers the entire driveway.
Right.
There's a pole that. As much like that is there. A new pole will be here. Electricity will run. Bold. But it doesn't matter because Eversource already has an underground easement in this zone.
You know, there's just, there's a driveway curve. There's really nothing that would.
We actually have the P and Z. Department head online here. Do we actually, do we actually have a copy of their eight twenty four?
We actually do. I I haven't talked about this morning. Got a verbal, but I think we're waiting for minutes to come over. So that's that's a piece of this that we just need to clean up that. We also don't have the title work that. We need to make sure that the town can enjoy easy treatments. So there are a few things that we're still waiting on.
We can, we can look to approve the easement pending your approval.
Subject to all those things.
He doesn't have to come back for a fifth.
Right.
I'm about to reserve a paragraph. Kind of used to that scene, so.
So.
We're good. We're ready.
Yeah, we're ready. There are going to be three motions. We're going to do one to accept the map, one to grant the easement, one to authorize me to execute easement.
Yep. I can ensure you say two easements.
Yeah.
One for Y one, one for Y two. Don't want to not come back.
You have to come back.
It's part of. So, okay, so the first motion, I move that we accept the map. Depicting the easement area to be granted to the Connecticut Light and Power Company, their reverse energy. Across properties of K P Associates, Town of Bethel in the state of Connecticut, dated June twelfth, two thousand twenty four. For electrical distribution on forty two Plum Trees Road. We're accepting the map. We have a second. All favor of accepting the map. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so next up. Okay, I I move that the Town of Bethel grant the two easements on the map, if mentioned. Contingent on receiving the title work. The written eight twenty four. You know, written eight twenty four approval and the town attorney approval. You have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and I move to authorize Gately Carter's first selectman of the Town of Bethel to execute, subject to town council review, the. Electrical easements. On the the map dated June twenty, June twelfth, two thousand twenty four, on behalf of the Town of Bethel. Any other discussion on that one? Does that sound good, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. To make sure the motion, yeah, and I didn't say the, I just said the easements on the map, but it's easement Y one and Y two. The record. Okay, all in favor, say aye. And Kerry.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, we have a raised hand from on my old site. Hey, Beth. Beth, did you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted you guys to know that I did send the minutes of the last planning and zoning meeting to Melanie's email address at Town Hall. And maybe I sent it to the wrong address. Verify that an eight twenty four has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll check that when I get back.
Thank you, Beth. All right, take care, Peter. New business. First off, I move that we recommend to the Board of Finance. The amount of fourteen thousand one hundred eleven dollars to come out of C N R for the fuel pump system hardware and software upgrade. So I'd say. Okay, so. Eric, do you want to add anything? We have the estimates here on D one. We've talked about this a few times.
No.
Yeah. I will say this thing costs us a ton of time. Kathy has to actually go down to. Highway Department anytime she wants to run a report or do a key or anything. I mean, it's it's very antiquated software. Probably just in our days before it blows up anyway.
I would just add that the fuel pump system at the highway garage.
Okay, and we'll add a fuel pump system in the highway garage. It's a friendly amendment. You seconded that, didn't you? Any further consideration? Okay, with that, I was trying to mine. It's all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so this one is new. I'd just like to start the discussion, voting a motion. It's for the approval of the Berry School Underground Storage Tank Removal. The quote is forty eight thousand dollars, which. It includes the quote in five percent contingency. We have it in our packet at E one. We didn't, we didn't even not make a motion. So we'll hold on motion holders to talk about it.
So I kind of perused through it. One question I had is underneath the tank. Is there more concrete?
Yes.
And does that need to get removed? Or are you just burying it?
We spoke about it. We didn't have it in the quote and we were saying anything that actually touched oil has to come out. But we think there's, is there a liner over that or something? Do you think that'll be buried?
So you'd be able to bury the concreter?
Yeah, I think so.
What happens if we're not able to bury it? What's the cost factor? Because you gave yourself a five percent contingency.
The one I can, I can go back and double check. I don't know. If that, if that uncertainty, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I just, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of. I kind of like to be prepared if it's, you know. Fifteen thousand dollars to remove the concrete. I mean, I'm not a huge math whiz, but you've got about a two thousand dollar contingency in there.
Yeah.
You know, I think, you know, we might want to carry a contingency on. So no one is just surprised that we're not coming back to the board and we have a gaping hole in the ground and saying, oh, guess what? We have to remove. And I think that's more fair to the Board of Finance, so they know what they might be dealing with. Now, I I'm totally for the project, you know, obviously, we have to do it.
We've actually talked about it.
They pumped it out recently, so they're looking at it. So I I I didn't get any indication that. So I'm excited, but I I agree with him.
Yeah. And it's a final last thing.
Yeah, it's a double line tank also. So there shouldn't be any contamination of the ground or.
I guess, I guess the question is, get, get the, get the amount of what it would cost if we have to remove the concrete and. Well.
Why are you removing the concrete? If it's contaminated or just to remove the concrete?
Only if we had to.
Yeah, we're not betting on it.
Well, if you, if it's, if there was a leak there, you're going to be removing contaminated soil, so that's also. An issue.
Yeah.
So I don't think.
Did you guys did some testing around it? I know it's not a hundred percent, but I'm sure you did some sampling around it to make sure there was no substantial leak.
Well, there should have been because it's a double line tank and they could see the double line tank at it.
No, I get it.
Eric, can you talk about the pressure and the town monitor the pressure that the tank didn't lose any pressure for the state?
Yeah.
I think that's important.
I I get it. I mean, chances are we're not going to remove the concrete, but. Yeah, I just think I'd rather have the contingency in there, so we're not coming back a second time and we have a gaping hole and saying.
That just gives an opportunity to spend the money. Look what happened with the shooting range.
They're not going to landscape it, you know what I mean?
Well, what what's our, what's our timeframe of getting this thing out? Because obviously, we have to get it out before school starts.
Yeah, we're, it's scheduled for, the lieutenant's schedule was August fifth and sixth.
I mean, if 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 you want, I mean. I guess if they find it, we can always call a special meeting and approve it. If you find it, you know. I mean, we could do that. I mean, I would be fine coming in if God forbid you found oil on concrete and has to give a vote. Come back for more money. We could do a special meeting, so the project doesn't stop.
I'm comfortable with that, and I think to the Board of Finance Chair's perspective.
Eric, did you talk about scheduling that that they have to get all their summer supplies in through that door? Bob Jim and Arrow.
Yeah, it doesn't block the door. We we actually discussed it. It doesn't block the door.
Yeah, I mean, the school wants us to do it.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
But to your point, we we did discuss that and we were looking at pictures of it the other day. Yeah. Okay, so if that's the case, then I'll.
I'm ready.
Okay, you're ready? So I move. I move that we recommend the amount of forty eight thousand dollars, which includes the quote plus a five percent contingency to the Board of Finance for approval out of C N R for the Berry School Underground Tank Storage, excuse me, Underground Storage Tank Removal. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. With respect to the next item, we can go ahead and I mentioned we tabled the town integration possible.
Would you guys, would you email to us before we talk about this?
Well, I think, I think what's going to happen is we'll let the P U C recommend it. Yeah, okay. We'll let them recommend or whatever. Okay, all in favor of table, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. We can talk about consideration of project assignments. There's not going to be a vote on this. Originally, when we were having the discussion, so as you know, we've got the H VAC. Project going on right now, we were, we were having some concern over. Being able to move fast enough to meet the guidelines of the project. You know, the Public Site Building Committee has been historically a little bit slow. And we worried about getting change orders approved before we do it, before they do it. After discussions with them and the town attorney, there are a couple of things. Number one, we actually, given the way the project is and the fact that it was put out there to the state that the Public Site and Building Committee would be the oversight before applying for the grant. We really can't change that. Secondly, I've talked to the Chair of Public Site and Building and they don't. Do, they don't do anything until a change order is approved. And in this case, she understands that they may have to meet more frequently or maybe do a subcommittee for approval of change orders to went forward. We're going to, I'm going to attend a meeting next week. And as is the town attorney and a couple of other folks. To to kind of drive that point home, that in the scope of this project. You know, they can't redefine it. They can't go back. They can't start over. Like, we really do need it to be on track, on time. Change orders approved. So we're going to kind of go that way. The second assignment coming up, I think we're talking about holding its eyes. We've talked. We're going to need an animal shelter at some point. Right now, Public Works is looking around, trying to get some information from Danbury on theirs. Just because, you know, there's just passed inspection and has all the stuff that needs in it. We're still not anywhere further about where we're going to put it or, but I I think we're going to do that inside. Not give that to the Public Site and Building Committee would be my choice, especially since they have such a significant project on their, on their desk right now. And the last piece of that is, we really do, we need to make sure we find somebody. You know, to get on there, we have the opportunity, not only reappoint a Republican, because a Republican is up. But also, we can appoint up to two people who have the experience necessary. So I suggest we put on our thinking caps, maybe talk to the to the parties if they have somebody with H VAC experience. We can actually bring in a couple of people who have that background. Just thought I'd kind of finish up with that. So there's, there's nothing to do here as as far as a vote, but we consider it. Any, any comments, discussion?
You know, we work with subcommittees before.
Because there was a lot of resistance to this project. From the committee. You know. We're talking about millions of dollars here, so.
Yeah.
This is, you know. They got, they got to stick to the plans. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
The ship already set sail. That's the direction it's going. You know, we can't. Be arguing about upgrading equipment and doing this. I mean, we have a budget. This is what we can do in our budget. The kids need air. We're not going to let anything delay it.
Yep, hundred percent. I mean, listen, we we were able to step in once before. Yeah, and kind of get that back on track, so I think.
It's just, this is a lot of money. This isn't, you know.
You know, did you say I have a plan and I have to work?
Yeah, well, I think the the problem with this one was the actual plan. Started out long before it was assigned to the Public Site Building Committee. And there's been a, an issue with. You know, the the personal opinions on the board about what kind of equipment we should use and stuff like that, almost wanting to redesign it. And frankly, the the comment was made that, you know, if they upgraded the system, they couldn't do as many rooms or they should just go back to, we should go back to the taxpayer. I felt like that was completely out of scope for what the board should do, so we're going to keep them on track.
I mean, fairness of it, they had great ideas. Money's not there. I think it's just, you know, we had a budget and this is. You know, if it's going to get us by for fifteen years and you have to start replacing some of the units, I mean, we're well aware of that.
Yeah, it may even be longer.
Yeah, they could get twenty. I mean, we've got quite a few.
Even if we replaced all of them, it would be a lot cheaper than what, or a lot less expensive to cheaper than what was brought up. Okay. Excellent. Next up for consideration, we were approached about a program they do in Danbury called the Hometown Hero Banner Program. So what they would do is, and I I actually messed up. Mary, would you be able to run in my office and next to the fridge, there's a. A brown tube, a faucet holds a tube like a banner. Would you grab that for me? I meant to bring that in. I totally forgot. So in Danbury, they do this Hometown Hero Banner Program. It's a fundraiser in their case for one of the veterans organizations, War Memorial. Here, it would be for the Bethel Patriotic Association, Bethel Patriotic Association, which is part of the American Legion. And we have on the school street side, we have twenty three lamp posts. And there would be two banners on each for a total of forty six banners. There are veterans who have lived in Bethel at one time. A family member, friend, or whoever would purchase a banner from the Bethel Patriotic Association. It would be designed, it would be put up there for the time between Veterans Day and, excuse me, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. You know, for them, first year out, you know, covering all the costs, I only make about thirty five hundred bucks. Second year, they make probably not nine thousand bucks. But considering, you know, their budget for the states, for the parade. Even though a lot of the parade is paid for by the town under the memorial fund. So this one is the four foot version. We'd be looking at three foot version. It would go out perpendicular from the poles.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Yeah, they're really cool. So I think what I would, what I would do is if we're going to approve doing it. We can do so. I probably want to go out and try one poll out. And then maybe us take a look at it before we actually finish it, like, well, prove this program, we'll start it. But we'll get, you know, maybe one of these banners up so we can actually see what it looks like on a poll.
Yeah, there's, didn't there sponsors still, like local businesses with banners on each?
So we're not on school street.
Not all this is.
This is just school street.
And there's forty something.
There's, there's, there's twenty three poles there and like on the corner depot. And it's two, two on each one. They'll be perpendicular to the street, I'm sorry, parallel with the street, and we don't stick out in the street. I've checked with P and Z. It's really up to us at this point that we can do it. I think we'll still. We'll, we'll consult them and show them pictures of it and we'll kind of get a, you know, a feeling from the board, you know, how they feel about it. If if we're in favor of the program. Then we could vote on it tonight with the contingency that we look at.
It's a great idea.
Okay. All right, so. I think it's a cool program. Yeah. Okay, so. I make a motion that we improve the, starting in the Hometown Hero Banner Program with Bethel Patriotic Association contingent on. First selectmen showing the, showing the banner or pictures of the banners to the P and Z Commission. And getting their approval. And also the Board of Selectmen seeing a photo of it actually on one of our polls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, sure, that motion carries. Finally, we will look at the consideration of the rural, the chief police contract. So we will need to go to the executive session for that. Was there anything else? Okay, gotcha. Before we, before we go to executive, okay, so we are now going to executive session for the consideration of a personnel matter. Which is allowed under Connecticut General Statute, section two hundred six. um, which is allowed under Connecticut General Statute, section two hundred six A. And with that, I'll invite in Chief Pugner, Mary Churchill, and our town attorney, Melanie Bryant. And, uh, can you stop the recording? Actually, we have to have a motion when it's, it's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Did you stop recording?
Stop recording?
You did?
No, not yet.
I don't have to say any more. Okay, um, we have a return from the executive session. The time now is seven fifty-nine P M. Um, I move that we approve the contract for the Chief of Police as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? Chief, before we vote on this, I'll tell you that again publicly, you know, you have our complete confidence. You're doing a great job for our town. We're lucky to have. Congratulations.
Thank you.
With that, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And motion carries. Okay, motion adjourned.
Motion do it again.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.